All right, we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we'll start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. Hold off for announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to any amendments to the agenda.
No amendments.
All right. And we'll move on to announcements.
So announcements, we are happy to have Hannah in the audience. Talk to us a little bit about, I believe, a blood drive, is that right?
Should I stand or ...?
Whatever you wish, sure. You can, you can stand and/or sit, your choice.
Okay. I'll take a seat for now. So, good evening. My name is Hannah Ratu. I'm a senior at South Burlington High School. And today I'm here to represent the Rebels with a Dream. We are a group of student-led blood drive committee. And each year we have a successful blood drive. And this year we're hoping for the same. Our blood drive is next week, Tuesday, January 27th. And it'll be taking place at the St. John Vianney Parish Center. We are hoping for a big community. We're just hoping for a lot of community members to come to this event. And I figured this was one of the best ways to reach out and get the community involved through the student board.
So Hannah, just so I can repeat, in case the mics didn't pick you up, this is on January 27th at St. John Vianney, and the hours are?
It'll be from 12 to 6:00 p.m.
12, noon to 6:00 p.m.? And is there an online sign up?
Yes, you can sign up at 1-800-RED-CROSS, or you can call 1-800-RED-CROSS, and you can sign up at redcrossblood.org.
So redcrossblood.org is the sign up online, and then the 800-RED-CROSS number?
Yes, or you can just walk in. We gladly accept walk-ins.
Good.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
So continuing on on announcements, February 4th was actually a school board meeting night is the Chamberlain, which we're going to be at Chamberlain, is part of their family fun night. And it's also their spaghetti dinner. And so we, that's the meeting we're going to actually start at 6:00 with spaghetti dinner. We'll have our meeting, and then we'll have executive session after that. So it will be an opportunity to mingle and have some spaghetti and connect with some of the Chamberlain group. Our meeting will be going on, and we'll certainly welcome them. We'll be in the music room at Chamberlain, hoping for a little attendance there, for people to stop in. Petitions to run for the school board three-year term and two-year term are due to the clerk by the 26th. Early dismissal, again, just keeping you posted on what's going on with activity. We had a late start today, yesterday, for the high school and middle school. We have an early dismissal on February 4th for the elementaries, 11:30. And we have math night at Orchard coming up on February 5th, 5:30 to 7:30, just to name a few. I don't know if other board members have other things that, in front of you, that might be coming up as well.
I just wanted to mention that Aladdin is at Orchard this weekend. And probably people have heard about the high school going to see Selma. The whole high school and staff went to preview that film with discussions to follow back at the high school. And I had a chance to listen in to part of a discussion among students, and they were quite insightful. And it was, it was interesting to hear the perspectives and how they experienced the film.
There were organized activities throughout the district, in every school, around Martin Luther King Day. So we're talking about that. Where you'll, you'll get a chance to see the calendar coming up here soon on what we're proposing for next year. And again, it's always kind of a balance. We've gotten some feedback on our calendar and possibilities for the future, and we'll, you'll see that soon. We'll probably need to be mindful of that, maybe in our, in one of our future calendars, agendas, in letting you see that. But, so, those are the announcements.
Yeah, I will also announce officially that I have submitted my petitions to run for the three-year seat that I currently hold. And so I look forward to serving again, or running in a campaign if, if another candidate or more candidates sign up by next week.
Great. Thank you.
All right. All right, move on to city-school collaboration.
So we have not had a formal, one of our formal meetings, Kevin, Pat Nowak, Elizabeth, and myself. We're going to get that back on track. But certainly, we have been active for the city, and so have you, as a testament of last night's meeting, with a steering committee meeting and getting updated on the work that the task force is doing on behalf of the city council and the school board. So a lot going on there. Certainly, as I said last night, I would encourage, you know, individual or collaborative feedback that you might have around what you heard last night, or what you saw, or what you're seeing as far as the work, to kind of make sure that we're staying on course based on what, what you're wanting as an outcome. I, I think they articulated that fairly well last night, the, the charge. And you know, the timeline right now is, is a struggle. So we're working through that. I think there may be a push forward of the first community meeting based on some of the data that's needed. But again, that's, that's where we are with city-school and master planning and visioning kind of all lumped together. The only thing I, I know that Elizabeth and I will, will continue to talk with, with the city on other areas that we can continue to collaborate on. And, you know, that's, so these are just some beginnings, I would say, around efficiencies and opportunities between the two. So, that's where we are.
And if I can backtrack for one second to announcements. I did mean to announce that the board is in receipt, and I have distributed to each board member a letter from a gentleman, Chris Kepsalis, out of Shelburne, with some comments in response to the position paper that South Burlington published, as well as some other public documents, just relative to education funding and student outcomes. So this has been distributed. The board will take a look at it, and we may have discussion at a future meeting.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Sure. All right, move on to master planning.
Again, master planning, we have met with Kevin Dorn, Frank Locker, this morning for a couple hours, and just kind of, what else, re-mapping, re-communicating, reorganizing some of the work that, where we're doing. And that's where some of the calendar changes will likely come out, or date changes will come out as we look at some of the, you know, the, the needs that are up in front of the task force. There's several options currently that are in play. Way too many options are in play. They did an exercise last night that is going to result in a quick Survey Monkey that will allow each individual to kind of provide their options based on some criteria and some quick comments that will, we think, bring that down to a much fewer numbers of options. And then from that will be the cost, a cost model analysis that will be applied to those X number of options.
How's the cost model being developed?
In collaboration with the city and the school, and maybe some outside resources, but to really look at what's the impact, you know, whether it's, involves a proposed sale, whether it involves a certain projected tax implications, what's that mean to revenue that might come out of the TIF district? You know, again, those are just a few. But basically, really trying to get it down to what does it mean to the individual resident taxpayer on what that does on their taxes this year and some year forward. So again, I'm out of my, way out of my, my zone. Certainly, you know, folks that are either on the city side or in, in our offices, as well as some consulting help to, to help us to figure that out. We know that there could be, we, we know that there might be, you know, three options that are very much liked, but without the financial conditions attached to them, we will go nowhere. So we firm that up again today. And we also want to hold firm on the community weighing in through the community survey and being able to do that. We think that the, important for the community to be able to see the cost implications is part of the options, because without them, you're essentially, people are dreaming and not, not focused. So that's part of the, the reconfiguration of, of some of these dates that are currently being set.
Do you know, David, how the survey is going to get pushed out to the community? Like, what, how are they going to get that?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a variety of ways. This is, again, COPE associates is really, this is their arena, and so statistically appropriate methodologies that are applied. And either having those email addresses and ensuring the contact gets there, or hand-deliver or hand mailing so that we get that information out. I, I don't know, you know, I don't know the percentage of returns and all of that, but it's, it's, the reason that we're going with them is to make sure that we get that feedback out to our community in the best way possible.
Do you, do you know if they are coming up with a criteria on kind of the cross-section of demographics? So that there's, you know, there's a variety of ages and family configurations represented in the survey feedback?
Not sure what, what you mean by that, I guess.
Well, I mean, for instance, if, if it, if it just went to parents with students in the school system, and it's electronic.
No, it's really, it's trying to be total community. So there's obviously...
So there'll be something that documents the
Right.
survey return. And if there's groups that are underrepresented based on our demographics, they might go after them a different way.
That's right. Yep. So, yeah.
Thanks.
So anyway, that's, that's where we are with master plan. And I, I would tell you that it is busy. It's busy. People have a lot that they want to say. It's exciting. Again, Cory's been there, I think, to some of them. Dan's popped into a few of those on the tail end. So there's a lot of conversation. We're now at a point, though, as I said earlier, we've got to start to...
Do we, do we have the next meeting? Do you know when that is?
The next meeting we had is the 29th of March. Is that right? No, no, 29.
No, January 29th.
January. Yeah, their, their next meeting is January 29th, next Tuesday. Is that right? Yeah, they keep coming fast. Seems like ways away, but, yeah. And then there's, there's four currently listed. There may be a readjustment on one of those, but...
Are those getting published? Are they in the other paper?
They've been in the other paper. They've been on, they're all on the city website. They're in the minutes, so we've...
Just on city website?
Uh, city website.
Not the school?
We, I don't think we have linkage right now to that. So we're pointing everybody to the city. They're posting the minutes. So. And the other paper's been doing a good job. We've also been pushing out kind of some newsletters. You've probably seen those, just little updates around kind of the task force work. And another one will come out tomorrow, push out as well, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, move on to the superintendent's report.
So first up is the update on the bond projects. And I'm going to just let John talk to that for a little bit. You have some information in front of you. Actually, on ADA access, not on the bond project.
Right, I, I did a PowerPoint. It's just a few of those here, so we maybe save time by just going through this manually. The, last year, the, we got funds to replace elevators in the middle school and, and the high school. And what I'm talking about today is the replacement of the elevator at the high school. It's, we know it's 50 years old, doesn't meet ADA requirements or city building codes. And it's the only point which provides access to all five levels in the school. There are three floors on the school, but there's five levels of access. So that's the, that's the menu when you get into the elevator. Little picture there of that. As we've been looking and planning, we started planning like, last June. We had engineers, Dorn Whittier is, is the architect, but the engineers, mechanical, electrical, et cetera, have been looking at our school. And we've been meeting with people who are involved in the accessibility at our schools, special ed director, and the high school principal to look, to look at what we needed to do. But in, on the next slide, it says accessibility issues to address. One is the replacement of the elevator needs to occur when school's not in session. It's such a, it's right in the middle of the school. And we've had two architects, two separate architectural firms, look to see where it should be placed. There was no simple solution like there was at this school. So they've agreed on, on that. There, and the project cannot be completed in two months, from January 15th to August 15th, or that kind of thing. Another thing is there's no alternative access from level one to level two. And the example there is the cafeteria is on level one. Level two is where a lot of our academic and just areas, access areas, road language, social studies, auditorium, library, and main lobby, other than the elevator. So if that elevator's down, there's...
And this is just like two or three steps, right?
It's four or five, yeah.
Yeah, those, those right here, yeah.
And so, and there's some remediation of hazardous materials that need to take place in association with this project. So those are accessibility issues that we're trying to address. On the next page is a proposed work plan. And the proposal is that we would split the project into two phases. In phase one, which would be this summer, build a permanent corridor and ADA compliant ramp from the lobby level two to cafeteria level one through the big picture classroom area and upgrade the adjoining room. So if you flip over to the, the next, the little drawing, the front entrance is marked, you come into the school.
See it, Julie?
Yeah.
And the big picture is, is behind the lobby. It's, it's marked highlighted here. So the, the proposal is to build a ramp through that big picture area into the cafeteria that can be used ongoing, and it's, it'll be a major hallway for people. The, the steps that are beside the elevator, right now, will, will have to be moved. And it's, it's really a hazard there if you, not only is it tight, but there, it's not enough clearance for kids. There's, there's an obstruction that comes out partway for people that they can hit their head. Yeah. It's amazing. You, you live with it because you don't see it every day. But when the, when the stairs are compressed a little bit with the new elevator, it'll, it'll be a major factor. So phase one would be to build that ramp. And then along with it, reconfigure and upgrade the big picture classroom, because that's where a lot of that hazardous material remediation needs to be done.
What, what's involved with the upgrade to that classroom?
Well, there'll be, there'll be, it'll wind up being two classrooms. There'll be walls there.
So basically, this, by putting the ramp in, is it shrinks down that classroom by the width of the, of the ramp down. It still keeps offices where, where they have been. It does shorten that big picture classroom up. And, you know, there's a fair amount of work that is entailed to do that with the modification of the big picture classroom, as, you know, asbestos ceiling tiles, et cetera. So it's a big project.
So does the, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Does the ramp take part of the classroom?
Yes. And now it's, now it's, there's this, if you walk down there, there's a stairway down, and then it goes over to a hallway outside of the cafeteria. So those stairs will go away, and it'll be a gradual ramp down.
So does the classroom have to expand in another direction?
No.
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 It's, 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 it will remain functional with a square footage reduction.
It, it was built, I think I have it right, as an art room. And there's some exposed drains. There's exposed drains under tables. And then it became the library. Then it was the enrichment center, and now it's big picture. But it, I, I can remember one of the administrators I worked with when I first got here said, told the superintendent, you know, we have to do something with this room. And so there was some federal funds used to fix it up a little bit, but...
The stairs have never been great in its capacity, whether it was, you know, art room, you know, the stairs and providing access has been, has been a problem. And you can't, you know, ramp pitch is highly regulated around ADA compliance. You can't, you know, you can't have a ramp that's too steep, you know, either way, obviously for fear of, you know, somebody in a wheelchair. So it needs to comply with that. Again, we do think that this is a smart decision. Typically, the only way that you've had the opportunity to get down to, you know, the cafeteria has been through that stairway that's not right next to the elevator from the main lobby. So we think that by having the ramp, it would allow for people that are exiting out of the eastern, eastern side of the school ramps, or hallways, can go down that corridor, and/or others can come down and exit through the lobby stairway. So we do think it's an improved means to get in and out of the cafeteria and locations. The reason for the phasing, as John has already indicated, is that it's an exorbitant amount of work that we can't compress into the summer and get it done. As stated, option, you know, phase one and phase two are going to push the limits so that the, the school can be back in, in service for the upcoming school year, so.
And is there, is there incremental expense because we have to phase this project?
There, there could be a little. It's, it's maybe not because of the phasing, but because of the timing. Getting a construction company to sign on to something has to be done in a compressed part of time.
Would we be putting a bid out for both phases?
Tomorrow, we have a meeting. Yes, it's time to talk about that. Tomorrow, David and I have a meeting with the architects and, and our bond attorney to make sure that, first of all, our, our funding plan works, is legal. And secondly, to determine what's the best course of action, either to hire a construction manager, who would then coordinate all the construction, or to have us, me and our facilities director, or me, work with the contractor ourself. And if we have a construction manager, we would phase it so they would be on board for the whole time. There's a cost in the higher, we have all that built into the total cost. And they could phase the work and keep an eye on it, because ordering the elevator with, there's a 16-week lead time on that, just to keep things moving. So I think we would bid it all out at once, but phase it. It would be clear what the contractor'd be getting into.
And the building configuration at the end of this, I always get concerned about, you know, when a decision was made to have five levels of a building.
Right.
Sort of what the thinking was at that time. Is the building more usable after this project? More consistently usable? Because I, I get a little bit concerned about sort of a, a patchwork solution to...
Right. The, the, right now, the, the girls locker room on the fifth floor is not accessible. It's, it's blocked off, and there's the gymnasium equipment there.
Are, are the girls using it?
Oh, the girls use it, but I mean, if you're in a wheelchair. It's inaccessible.
Oh, okay. I hit the general, no one can use it.
No, 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 sorry.
Okay.
But, but it's not accessible to kids who need to get there. So in, in addition to this, we have our activities director working with the principal to realign the equipment that's upstairs and look at the small gym, find, find alternatives for that. So yes, that will be more functional. Secondly, there's, now there's no access from the first level to the second level without using, without the elevator. So that takes care of that problem. From the first level to the third level, there's a backup to the elevator, which is a lift.
In the, under, in the art wing, that one over there?
Yes, it's across near the athletic trainer's office. Which is, we've spent some money fixing that up. So we still have, we still are going to have a problem between that third level and the fourth level that we're going to rely on this new elevator pretty heavily. The idea is we're trying to get backups for everything. So yes, we will be more functional. I think that the fact that there's hazardous material in, in the floor and, and the ceiling tile in that one room, we have to take it all out before we can get going. So it'll make that big picture area more functional.
So I, I think, again, these are positive adds, enhancements to the building, not patchwork. ADA compliance, better accessibility and flow from the first, you know, the lobby floor down to the cafeteria that allows for, you know, increased flow and not as many bottlenecks. And it provides for better, you know, service to the five floors. It's hard to believe, five floors, but...
There's special conditions, since I've been here, we haven't had to do this because we haven't had a project this costly. But the contractors all have to be pre-qualified because it's over half a million dollars as part of our bidding. And so what you'll get from us after the meeting tomorrow and soon would be a recommendation to hire or not hire a project manager. And that's one thing. And then from there, we draw up the, our P specs and keep you informed all the way through. And also, part of the funding is coming from the budget that we have on the table right now. So that's a question for our attorney tomorrow, too.
Do, can we go through the proposed funding on this one?
Yes. In the, in the bond issue, we, we, it was a $1,675,000 bond issue. We have $600,000 of bond funds for the elevator. And when we look at the, these are the 50% construction drawings. We, we have a lot of work already into this and, and some pretty good estimates. The elevator, if we just did that on its own, is still somewhere around that $600,000. So we didn't miss the mark on that so much. It's just the other, getting to the point of being able to do that is, is where the collateral work that has to be done. So discuss 600...
That was a question I had, John, of sort of, you know, did we miss the mark with the initial estimate? It sounds like that was on, on the spot for the elevator itself. Was the original assessment of that, was the issue of accessibility identified with the levels of the building at all? Or was it just sort of, we need an elevator to go in this spot that's ADA compliant?
Well, we had the ADA audit in front of us, so we knew that we had a problem with the ADA. So that's one thing.
Which was more the size of the elevator, right?
That's, well, the condition of the elevator is really what had us concerned. In, in discussing the project, not with just an engineer or architect, I mean, getting the building people involved and, and special ed and that kind of thing, we realized that we had a big deficiency in addition to the elevator. What started is we wanted to have an alternative from level one to two while this was in construction. And then when we looked at it, oh, maybe we should have something all the time because the, there is no alternative way.
No backup.
Right. No backup, that's right. So the, the funding was 600,000 for the elevator. The second source of funds is to reduce the scope of the restroom project and utilize for this project. And so we need to have some ADA compliant restrooms ready to roll, but we still have $60,000 to figure that out. So that's, that's kind of the trade-off here.
How does that work, John, with the voters voting? They really voted to do the bathrooms, though, right? And so we're not really going to do that?
Well, we are still going to do bathrooms.
Just not going to do them all.
The proposal is to do, get some compliant and take care of this kind of bigger issue. So that's, that's, that's the proposal.
Is that when, when we went to the taxpayers on that bond vote, I think we were pretty explicit about what the funds would be used for. So we might have said, for instance, you know, all restrooms would be ADA compliant. I don't remember exactly what it said. But if that changes, and we've had to reduce the scope of that, what's our obligation to report back, or even to get the communities? Because that was a vote. So do we have any obligation to
Update?
the taxpayers to revisit that? I, I understand it's a, it's a redeployment issue
Right.
within the bond, but, but the community is not getting the full scope of what was approved specific to the restrooms.
Right.
I think, I mean, we can ask for advisement on that, I mean...
Well, that's, that's one of the main reasons for tomorrow's meeting.
So that's where that... So that's where that would come from?
Whether we're within the scope and the, again, you know, we did, there was cost modeling that was done initially when we were proposing the repurposing of the bond. We stated, you know, X, Y, and Z we wanted. If we're within, you know, the range that, again, the bond attorney supports, then I think we'll be fine. I mean, and if not, then we have to go back, we are in a different place, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I could just imagine at some point, if we have to go out for 140, inflated at some point, to bring all restrooms into compliance.
Someone would say, how come?
Yeah, didn't we do that?
Right.
I'm noticing on here what you said, gentlemen.
Yep.
Article three on the ballot asks voters to approve the repurposing of $1.6 million, $775,000 in funds remaining from a bond issued in 2005 for some significant facility projects. These include the installation of an elevator at Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School, roof repair at Chamberlain School, and the high school replacement of an elevator, comma, restroom upgrades, comma, window replacements, comma, and roof replacement at the south way.
So it's certainly within the scope of what was asked for in Article Three. But that's what you'll cover tomorrow.
Yes. And Bob Fletcher was the one who advised us anyway, so.
Probably what may be recommended or suggested is, have you provided the, an update to the board around the project scope? Have you communicated that in a publicly-warranted board meeting? Have you, you know, have you communicated this? And maybe we need to do more, too. As we scope this out more, it will probably be important that we're really clear around, you know, what we're able to do.
Any questions, comment?
David, the subject was the projects. The, just for the record here, the Chamberlain roof was completed under budget, the high school roof was at budget. This elevator and the middle school is completed, although the final punch list is not signed off on. And we expect some tweaks to this through about 90 days. So it's...
And we'll have the same issue with window replacements based on mitigation.
Absolutely, but we've scaled that project down to an amount that's still within the bond, right?
While you're on the elevator, I will tell you that the middle school elevator did go down again today, as it had some shaking in it. So we're still working through some issues, so.
I wrote it this morning. I write it up every day and I write the old one down. And I reported no issues, but I was...
So it's got something going on with it, and we're conscious of that, but you should know, so you don't hear about it.
How long is our warranty on that?
Well, it's all covered. It's, I don't want to say this is normal.
We haven't, it's open and all licensed and inspected, but it's, you put a new piece of equipment in an old building, there's going to be some of this. So the old elevator, though, we, if you remember, we spent $75,000 and got it working pretty well, so.
We're asking for it to be rectified. I don't want you to think we're just, you know, this is the way it's going to be. So we're asking that this be corrected.
Yeah, the retaining is still sitting in the bank.
You get the point.
Thank you.
Thanks. The budget communication plan?
So you have the, another update in your book with you around the budget communications. These are being kind of populated at the present time. We definitely have said, and Diane alluded to the play coming up, we're going to make sure there's information available. We're in the process right now. John's done a huge amount of work to get our budget book up to speed. You have the flyer in front of you, articles, you know, in the other paper. We're at a point where we still, we need to make sure we're feeling good about the communication of the budget. I've gone to one school. I'm going to have, as I said earlier, I have two others coming up on Monday, one of which John's going to help me do at Orchard. I'll do Central, Tuttle, and the high school. So beyond that, you know, articles that go out, the big flyer, which Diane read from earlier, is in need for update. Certainly, if there's board desire to assist in any way to make sure it reflects what you would like it to say beyond what we've done in the past. And I say we, because you had a say in the big flyer, too.
Do we have this on a template so that they can just kind of populate it with the new?
We do, yeah.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
I say we do, we do, right?
We work with other paper staff.
Yeah. So if you like this design, if you want something different, you know, obviously easier if you wanted to just repurpose this, use this kind of format and put new information in, or if you want to, you know, call out some different things, this is kind of, this was what we put in last year.
Do we have the comparable increases?
We're working on it. I don't know that we have these exact ones, we don't yet, because some of them are still solidifying.
What I'd like to propose maybe is that if there could be an effort made to populate this with the updated information and maybe a couple of board members review it in advance, if we know what, I don't know when he wanted to publish this.
I don't know when we did last time, but, you know, having it ready to go strategically...
If we could just backtrack into a period of time where a couple of board members could review it, that would be great.
I'll take a look at it if you...
Was there any feedback last year on this from the community or anything?
I mean, I had, you know, I had some folks, you know, just anecdotally say it was helpful information, kind of laid it out for us.
So there were no serious defects or omissions noted?
No, from the people that I certainly heard from, they thought it was helpful information.
We may want to consider, in this document, as with the first other paper article, which looks like it would be due next week, a discussion of, one, kind of the relative settlement of all contracts in the district relative to Chittenden County settlements, as well as legislative activities that the board and administration have been involved in in support of kind of education reform. So that could be something that gets highlighted, both in this document as well as maybe in a, in a letter. I don't know if the rest of the board would agree with that, but I think that's been, a lot of the efforts have been toward those events, and I think if there's budget sentiment, it might be relative to those areas.
So I think this, the other paper thing is obviously an exception, but this is almost all directed at school events. So I think that's going to give good coverage to the parents and people who interact with the school. But I'm a little concerned that we'll, it appears to me we're a little light on trying to deal with the rest of the community. One suggestion is that we use the front porch forum. I know you can't put an extended article in there, but you can put links to City Records, the school website. And I think we ought to try to be creative in finding other venues to do things akin to what we're doing for some of the school things. Even in my mind, to the extent of cutting back a little bit on the school things and going, doing some of the others.
And actually, we've got, am I looking? How many other paper opportunities do we have? One? Maybe three or two, two?
One unpaid one.
A letter, though, right? So we've got one letter and is it two? Oh, okay, so you just put due dates. So there's one letter and one other publication between now and town meeting? Yes.
Yeah. This is a paid thing.
That doesn't count, though, that's paid, right?
Yeah. So every 30 days, you can have one publication.
So does that mean there's one? Oh, because we're in February already.
So one available and then one paid.
And one available in March, in principle?
Today is our due date for the, for the other one.
So would we want to put this one in the last possible, the day, the Thursday before the vote?
Well, that one, according to this, it would go in February 5th for the February 12th publication, because there's, oh, it's no letters will be published.
And I'm not, I think you probably want to put this in, like you just said.
Earlier?
I'm not sure, though, because you have vacation week in there, too.
Yeah, the 20th.
There's a bunch of people around.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So the February 19th, though, that's not school vacation yet, but the following week is. So this, the 19th would be the Thursday before school vacation?
I believe that's right.
And so it would be the second to the last Thursday before vote?
Is this, is this date right on the third page of line? It says other paper due date for February 12th publication? So there's nothing for the February 19th publication?
Yeah, I may just have missed it.
So if, if the 19th we could get, that's not vacation, correct? So we should target the budget highlights for publication in the 19th edition? So we would have one unpaid opportunity for either the February 12th or the February 5th publication with a letter.
Now Cory's here tonight, writing for us, that will probably be in the next article, some of her information next week. Right?
Yeah, I did one last weekend and today was an updated budget article in there.
Thank you for doing that, yep.
Okay.
One thing we might want to get into the highlights, one thing that's different this year is the budget books are not going to be mailed to everybody. So we might want to put some kind of a hook in the budget highlights thing that says if you want to see that, how you get it.
Yep.
What about our social media?
Yeah, I haven't, you know, I've wanted to target some training on, like, Twitter, and certainly we'll have it on web, our website. In the past, you know, we had the website up with our vote button active.
Have we got the website up with the vote button yet?
No, not yet.
Could, do you think we, is there a way for us to piggyback on other stuff that the city is doing? The city has distribution lists for the planning and visioning for the city center stuff?
So we can make sure that that's available to be seen, or just how that pushes us?
Well, if you get their...
Mailing list.
If you get their mailing list. It's an email list, so it's an email distribution list, use it.
I don't, yeah, we can ask how they push stuff out or what they're, what they're using for that push. We can ask.
I know Alana has, I mean, I kind of noticed that if I wanted cider and donuts, I had three hours to get there.
So I can try to take a pass for next Thursday on a letter, if I can get some help on that, too. That'd be great.
Does anybody else want to look at this after David populates it and it's sent to me?
Yeah, I would like to look at it, too.
Okay.
I'll look at it, too.
Well, we can send it to all, we can get it to Diane first.
It's just nice to kind of have a couple of eyes on it.
Yes.
John?
Oh, I see different things.
Just want to talk about the budget book and the review, because it's...
It'd be good to maybe have...
It's 90% done. The city would love us to have it done yesterday, but everyone knows it needs a board review, so.
So if there's a couple of folks, I mean, we, the budget book, it's not going to be only, it's going to be electronic, primary and backup hard copy, which we're going to make copies, the school, the school district is. So it would be good to get some review. Typically, we've done kind of the question answers, which we know are kind of up on or in front of folks, so actually John has been working on that. I've been working on it, but not, I'm behind. It would be great to get a couple of board members. We can push it out to all, but it would be nice to just have somebody, you know, sooner rather than later, working with us on this. I think we have until next week, right, Monday, Tuesday? We need to kind of have the button ready to go, because they want to do the mailings of the postcards. Postcards go out saying if you'd like, you know, information on da-da-da, so we want to be able to post, once they receive it, you've got to have it turned up and ready, or once they say, could you, when they call, can you send us one? So we need to have it fairly ready, and it needs to be kind of in that next week, so.
I'm sure they want to look at it, but I would hope that one of the others who has a child in the school would take a look at it, too. Different perspectives.
So let's make a commitment. I can say tomorrow, but I'm going to say Monday. It'll be to you in the morning? And then we'll see how it takes.
We'll include everybody, but maybe if Dan and Julie can help with just, you know, kind of shepherding the feedback to us or reading, whatever you want to do, come in with us, that'd be great.
It's mostly done, but David and I need to coordinate the...
You're being nice, John. David hasn't done his part completely.
That's not what I'm saying.
So if you're sending it out to all of us, do you want any feedback that any of us might have?
I mean, I think what might be easiest, if there's feedback that board members are seeing, you can send it to me, I'll then push it out to Julie and Diane, and then you guys can, and Dan and Julie, and you can kind of then work with us to make those changes. The other, the other piece to that is actually Patrick, who's been out sick a bit, but he's been working on, which he's done for us in the past, the absentee ballot process, he's been working directly with Donna Kinville. So that's ready to be turned up and on, so that, again, this is the process whereby which people electronically can request an absentee ballot, which he also works to push that out to students that he's had in the past, so there's an opportunity for individuals that are citizens to get that.
What's the open period for the ballot, do you know?
I'm not positive of the timeline.
Sometimes these periods start before the information's available.
Yeah, you receive the ballot within seven days. I don't know the turnaround. Obviously, that's something that Donna has to make sure is connected with.
I know it got to be a big deal with the November election, and they actually went out 45 days before the election day.
And the information wasn't available yet?
Well, it wasn't budget information, and it was only was who's running for office, but, you know...
They can't have a ballot before the 26th when the petitions are due.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it is, Donna has been great and Patrick has been great in trying to coordinate this for us. So we also make this available, both city and school, to get the information on the absentee ballot, particularly when it's close to the vacation cycle, right, where people are going, so getting it out in front of families, our families, is important, even though we're, we're going to be back in session on the early March, Monday and Tuesday.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts on the budget communication plan?
We'll keep this, I mean, this is alive, you know, if you have other suggestions that come up or things that you've done, or, you know, we think we should be looking at, just make sure you let us know.
Do we have an opportunity to update any FAQs on the website at all? I'm just thinking, as we get feedback, I wonder if we should at least have that capability?
Sure, we definitely do. We definitely can do that. I mean, if we're getting an overwhelming amount of comments that are coming in, we can make the changes.
Because that will be posted, right?
Right, I mean, there is an ability to do, I mean, of course, I'm going to get, I'm going to get some feedback on this, so be careful. But, I mean, we do have, if the city says, hey, we're finding this major error in what we're putting out, I mean, since we're printing it all the time, we could make the correction to that. I think we want to be careful not to have, like, 100% returning, you know, because otherwise then it's like, how, what did I get? So substantive corrections or perhaps an addition, you know, could be there, because some people may go back and look at it again. And we may need to just inform them of that.
Well, actually, that's probably worth thinking about, because we would not have done that with the printed booklets.
Once they're done, they're done.
And if that, if we're going to leverage that, we'd have to have a way to differentiate versions that we're going out, so.
Right, so change is sense or something. Right, so changes sense or something, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, so we definitely have capacity, we have the ability to do it, it's about capacity and turnaround, because if they're coming in fast and furious for Donna to send out, then, you know, that's going to limit our ability to make those, I mean, our, our changes.
All right, unless there's other comments, we'll move on to agenda item nine, administrative reports.
So we're going to, we're going to walk you through integrated data system, oh, is that the, yeah, yeah. So I'm going to let Stuart, I mean, we've, Stuart's provided this, we've provided this to you, I'm asked to not to go through it line by line, give you a little bit of an update, and then answer any questions that you might have, I think would be the best use of, of time here. A lot going on in this particular area. So Stuart, you want to give a brief?
I'll just try to be brief. For a long time, you know, this is not the first time you've heard that our student information system is not really what it ought to be, and every year it's been eliminated from the budget, I think usually before you even get to see it, because it's just a very expensive item. Though compared to an elevator at the high school, it's really an expensive. So, but, but this time, you know, we have really identified as one of the key goals as an administrative team when we worked this summer. It's been a frustration for a long time, and that's why it points out to our multi-tiered system of support, to have systematic, systemic and comprehensive approach to things, one of the key pieces of that whole system. And so the goal is there, and the real piece is how to move forward. And so at this moment, you know, I also gave you a little bit of the history. We are working with Kerry Sewell with, using Title II grant funds that were approved, he's meeting with all the administrators. And he's also has some expertise in data that I admit I don't have in terms of his own background. And basically, the, the key piece is the project planning. And actually, John and Karen have all spent working on this, because obviously, I'm thinking about it from the student information system, but HR and payroll. But we're also phasing it in, so the only thing I would like to correct in terms of the cost, we didn't put $100,000 in the budget for this. You know, John has thought of a phased-in plan, and what's the actual amount, John?
Forty.
So.
Forty for this, right.
So that's, that's the one major correction, that's why I wrote draft all over this piece in very big letters, so that you would know our plan. And so this is really, you know, this is one of those things, it's a lot of energy and a lot of work, and of course, the budget kind of needs to pass to move forward. So, you know, we, we are gathering data, we are moving forward, so that we are set to go. If on March 1st, everything goes according to plan, or March 2nd, whatever the actual election day is, 2nd, I think, right? What, 3rd, okay, March 3rd. Tuesday, first Tuesday in March, everything goes according to plan, that we are ready to, you know, really start moving forward. So if you have particular questions, I'm happy to answer the best I can, and I know that John can also answer some of them as well. Yes, Diane?
I had three questions, but now I have two, because you answered the $100,000, I had a question about that.
I know, biggest budget cut in a minute, you know, it's fun.
They're on page, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, page 5, number 4 at the bottom. It says, "Hire and train temporary staff to cover daily data workload if needed," with a question mark. So what, where, how?
So that, that's what Kerry Sewell is, really, you know, we use grant money to hire some temporary staff. In terms of daily workload, so that, that's, you know, at the other end. At the, this piece here, I, I don't know, you know, we put it in the budget plan, in the action plan, because it's always that hard question, it's the same question like a project manager for the elevator, you know. At some point, we may have to say, well, gosh, we can't get this work done, if we need to get it done, do we need to do this? So this isn't like we're going to do it, but we just want to make sure we covered everything to see.
Sometimes it's more, you know, although this should not be the case anymore with like data entry, but depends on compatibility and accuracy, you know, there may need to be some of that work. So part of that is, you know, reserving that, some resources to ensure that if we do need to do that, we can get it done.
So that, you know, my, part of my question was how much and how?
Yeah, we would, we would know that more when we basically pick a vendor, because, you know, it, it's a long migration system to do these kinds of things. And so our hope is that we'll pick a vendor who migrates most of it for us. But you just don't know for 100%, you know, that's, that would obviously be one of the, the questions. Do you need to add anything to that, John, you look like you might want to, but you don't have to?
Oh, no, it's part, we specify some, what we want in the RFP.
Right.
Yes, and then you got to the vendor point, right?
Right.
Thank you.
And when you say that, Stuart, the migration, because that was one of the questions I had, you've got objectives here that kind of rely on, I just sort of think of the issue of, you know, the quality of your output is directly linked to your input.
Right.
And is that what you're talking about, is the input?
Well, I'm talking about the input we have now, in other words, we have a variety of records and, and pieces that, we need that to move into the new system. As well as how the fields in the system, do we have the fields we want to get us the data out we need for state reports and the various things? Not to mention, again, one of the things that I talked about, and one of the problems with our current system, is the rebuilding reports is very, it's not intuitive. And they're very individualized, so we want a system that obviously, it's very easy for an administrator or even a teacher to build the kind of query and report they want.
Is, do people really build reports, or is there a set of, you know, 90% of reports could be standardized?
There are actually, in Schoolmaster, there are some set reports, like I can do birthdays, like nobody's business, and some other templates. No, I'm, I'm being serious here. Pretty much any other inquiry you want to do, you know, like the data that we gather for, you know, for the end of the year, for school incidents, is, is almost like building a new individual report. And if you built that report, and somebody goes in and makes a change, it does not revert to the original. It goes with whatever somebody changed. And so those are the kinds of pieces that make Schoolmaster very.
Conversant?
Yes, thank you, piece to work with. And we've, I mean, when I first came here, we've built, you could actually inadvertently change Schoolmaster data, but they fixed that problem, but you, it was really kind of shocking.
Is that covered, like what's, what addresses that issue? Because I do think, you know, consistently pulling the right data into a more standardized report that has security on it such that it can't be changed.
Right.
Would be ideal. And my guess is there's very few really customized, user-driven reports that will fall, I mean, it's, it's probably the 95 or more standard, but certainly more than birthdays.
Right, and, and that's, that's kind of the piece, again, as John said, I mean, as we begin to really look at, you know, there's about three or four vendors out there that, you know, seriously looking at, a lot of schools around here use Power School, which also has some flaws, there's some places in other parts of the country that use some very different systems. You know, sometimes things happen regionally for a reason, and, you know, I just want to make sure we don't miss something, just because everybody else in Vermont has something, but maybe everybody in Massachusetts is something that's better.
And is this, does this project have a lot of training requirements?
Well, that's again, something that we don't quite know yet, Elizabeth, but our hope is, again, that it's a more intuitive system. One of the key pieces is the ability of teachers to use the data, which, which right now is virtually impossible with the system we have. And obviously, if you're really going to use student data for improving student outcomes, the closer you are to the source of who's working with the students, the better you are.
Would this replace EDU and Naviance and her?
No, the hope is that, and, and again, you know, you know, we'll, we'll create a list of all those. So there's two different kinds of programs, some programs we probably will want to replace. For example, if this could replace our cafeteria program, because it ties into both the HR, or eventually, you know, payroll system, you know, so that we don't have six or seven, you know, follet and this and that and the other thing. But there are some really specific programs, such as what's now really called NEO, but EDU 2.0, and, which is our learning management system, and Naviance, which will be probably what will drive our personal learning plans. We'll be looking for compatibility, that would certainly be one of the things on our punch list. And one of the issues right now is that EDU is not compatible with Schoolmaster. And actually, Steve Webster has just spent the last week, because he's built a program that transfers teachers' EDU grades into Schoolmaster for report cards, so that people don't have to do it by hand, which is how they originally, that'd take their EDU data, computer data, and by hand, put it into Schoolmaster. And we have created a program, but it's not a simple piece, again, you know, because everything has to align just right. But there are many programs that EDU is compatible with.
So anything you've got would be compatible with EDU?
That's our hope, yes.
And we're still using Rebel Net years late, two years, three years later now for some things?
Right, and that one.
That would go away?
Yeah, because Rebel Net is a, is part of Schoolmaster, you know, it's, it's along with that. Not function with EDU.
And John, can you just tell me where the $40,000 is in the budget?
We had that in the, the same ITE budget, in information technology education line.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know the individual that's acting in a resource capacity here, but I guess my question is, did Milton have a data system that was superior, and that, that this individual has, has had experience with?
So Milton, like many schools, so they have Power School, and, and they also, like many schools, actually work with, this is, it's, it's, it's a, it's a management system, and it's escaping me now, VCAT, which many schools use, which generates the report cards, does a lot of things, but it's not an SIS. It's not the whole system. It does allow teachers more access to data in the, and there are a lot of additions, and it will certainly be one of the things that we'll be looking at, but it's really his experience in data use, right? And what's the right data we want to be looking for? More than that, he's not really hired to be the person determining the hardware, software piece of this. He's really the person to help us create the list of what we want that system to do, you know, and his system, he was at Milton first as the middle school principal, and then the curriculum director for, I think, about five years. They had their system, you know, before he was there, and I don't know if he recommended ever that they buy another system or not.
What's the longevity of something like this?
Well, we had this one since 1989.
I mean, this is a different time we're living in.
Right, I mean, the hardest part about buying technology is that companies buy other companies. You know, so our hope is obviously to have a system that lasts a long time. And one of the things we'll be looking at is the stability of the company, and who's owned it, and what's the, the piece. But for example, that's one of the things that happened with Fusion. You know, is that, you know, we bought Fusion, and it's still running, but they sold to another company, and so their upgrades on Fusion are not what they could be. We could go to the new company that now owns Fusion. So these are always in the world of technology, you know, I can't make 100% guarantees, but one of the things we certainly would be looking for is, what's the history of, are they a buyer, buying up smaller companies? Or are they a smaller company looking to sell in a few years?
We certainly not want to do this in a vacuum either. Obviously, you know, we're talking about it here, but, you know, also at the state level, you know, obviously, we, we recognize that, you know, systems are needed, not just for us, but for, for the state. And when Stuart talks about, you know, sending, you know, certain data to the state, and when it takes an exorbitant amount of time, you know, there's some efficiencies that could be rendered for all schools if we had more similar, if we had similar systems. So, you know, Stuart indicates like Power School, we're going to make, we hope, an informed decision, obviously with your approval, but we'll hope that that will be transferred and communicated to others, so that we hope that when they have something that's in need of update, they'll benefit from our information and our process, so that perhaps they'll come along, so we have a, a greater end participating, with the hope that maybe the state follows similarly.
Stuart, does this rather daunting list of objectives include what you believe are going to be necessary to support these oncoming programs, Common Core, PLP, EQS, PBG?
Yeah, I mean, clearly, one of the key pieces that we're going to be looking at is how does it keep data that's proficiency-based? You know, because if we're, if we have a rubric-based or the Evans, or, you know, any, any which is a set of proficiencies, you know, one of the problems we have is the current system isn't really very well set up to do that. So that whole, you know, as we've talked in the past about the dashboard system, or some way that we could really keep student portfolios that begins to gather that evidence that we could call up very easily, that again, is going to be one of those pieces on our, our list of, you know, what we want. And I did get the first vendor, I know nothing about this vendor, but you know, now the ads are starting to come, proficiency-based education on your horizon, we have the system. So people know it's out there, this is not just the state of Vermont, and, you know, that, that will become part of the dialogue.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, financial planning and budget monitoring.
So again, this is a John piece, this is a follow-up from our previous discussion in this area.
I didn't want to lose, it's been about a month, I think, since we talked about it. We had its policy monitoring report 2.5. And when we discussed it, I, I wondered in preparing it, if I was making, making the mark on what the board actually is looking for. And I thought we needed to have a discussion, maybe a subcommittee work with me to look at it, and explain what I've given you in more detail, and say, hey, is this meeting the mark, and maybe present some alternatives? And so I don't, we wanted to pick that back up, so we didn't lose it, and we need to just have, I guess, a subcommittee is what I recommend, but I think we talked about it, actually.
Which policy is this on?
2.5.
2.5, where was that on the schedule?
We, we, you have it. Probably in December. You received the report, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we had 2.4, and then we had 2.5.
Yes, and we started going through it, and then.
And then I remember, yep, sorry, too much stuff.
I mean, I think this is, this is a good practice.
And we had the budget, so then.
It's okay, David, I got it.
Yeah, I should have.
That little distraction.
Yeah, that.
I think it's a good, it's a good practice, because, you know, these, the monitoring reports that you some, you only see once, it'd probably be, you know, yeah, maybe you provided the feedback, but as time changes, it may say, hey, given what we are, it would be nice to have a little bit more on this, or something totally different than what we have. So, I mean, I think, you know, we're not wanting to overdo, you know, the subcommittee piece, but as a result of, you know, passing through, you know, John's idea here is a good one, to just make sure we're, you know, his words hitting the mark around information that helps provide the clarity around budget.
Well, since you're bringing it up, it is at the point where our six months is past of doing every report together, and we said we would reevaluate it at that point in time. So I think we should discuss whether we're really being efficient with our time by going through each report line by line in our board meetings. Just putting it out there.
I, yeah, I think my, given, given that Martin is that.
That's exactly why I'm doing it now, Elizabeth.
You clearly are taking advantage of that. Why don't we include that on, if, if the board is amenable, on a future agenda? Just kind of a mid, mid-year policy review?
I think you're right, though, John, as far as 2.5 goes, I think that that would be best.
I mean, some of you may then think that there's others that should have a similar kind of re-review, or a review of content, right?
Well, I mean, that one in particular is pretty heavy on.
There's a lot of, a lot of documentation. I don't know if it's all helpful, you know.
And we reviewed that, we reviewed that in December, and when's it up? And when's it up again?
We didn't finish it, though.
Right.
It's coming.
Yeah, it wasn't finished.
It was continued.
It wasn't finished, okay, so your recommendation is that a subcommittee take it up with you, and that there may be, in, when it comes up again?
Yeah.
That it be the subcommittee feedback that...
Helps.
Right.
Helps inform that, okay.
I mean, there's some that are huge, right, and that's one that's big, so it's a lot to digest.
I think, though, that, I'll give you a quick example, there's a, about, do we do accurate cash flow projections for borrowing?
Mm-hmm.
Our interest cost is about $4,000 a year, so I provide three or four cash flow projections, and bank statements, and all this kind of stuff, and is that really what you want, and, and maybe we should just project the interest costs and say, well, we were within 10% or whatever, and, you know, make it simpler.
Yeah. Well, I'd be happy to serve on that, I would, in his absence, volunteer Martin.
Oh, yeah.
Just as a, as a backup, and we can schedule that, John, at your convenience?
Okay.
And then we'll get that back on the agenda, and that may be a good platform to have that discussion then, Julie, because we'll have the example of kind of a beefier policy that maybe had, had a recent experience with a subcommittee approach, and it may be dependent on the policy.
Well, I was just thinking, it may be that, like, 2.4 and 2.5 have subcommittees, and some of the other ones may be appropriate to, to do line by line.
That could be an improvement on our process, to sort of delegate that way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, are we ready to move on to setting the agenda for February 4th?
So, I think, we probably should give you an update on the calendar, which isn't on there.
Yeah.
I don't know where we'll be, you know, at that point, but we should be along a little bit more, and we can inform you, I do think there's a, a need to make that, have a conversation around the calendar, particularly holidays, we've gotten some feedback, some of you have probably gotten some feedback of various holidays, and I think that would be important to have it warned, so that individuals that may have some feedback can, can provide it to you.
Mm-hmm.
So, I would recommend that, and I...
Will there, will there be a recommend, I assume this is a county-wide calendar you're talking about?
So, county-wide, so Champlain Valley calendar, by statute, we have to have common 175 days, and then from the 175, we need to add our additional days by contract, student days up to 180, and contractual days up to 189, so, the calendar has, has both.
Yeah.
The satisfaction of the 175 common, and then our additional days, so that would be a recommended calendar to you, we're probably, at the, at the 4th, we'll not be yet ready for finality, I, I just think having that conversation in public, given that there's been some feedback.
Will you, will you have a recommendation at least by then?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, there'll be, that leaves the opportunity for a public reaction?
Yeah, it will be populated, that's right, and, but I think that's an important step that should be taken, generally, Delaina assisted me that today, we voted on this board, what, in March timeframe, last year?
Okay.
So...
So, we'll add that to the February 4th agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The only other thing would be maybe an update on the elevator, I don't know, John, we'll probably add that too soon.
No, no, it's probably right.
Yeah, so I think we should have that on there, given...
This elevator?
Uh, the high, high school elevator.
And this elevator? How about, oh, it's running.
We'll give you, I'm going to give you updates.
It's still shaking.
I'm going to give you updates along the way.
Well, you have that, you will have that, too.
Yeah.
But when the bills come through to be paid, there'll be recommendation, you know, that kind of thing, and be a chance to say no, I mean, at that point, so.
So, those will be added, and again, this is, it looks like a fairly, you know, light agenda, although those two things added, I think will be, will be appropriate, we'll figure out the amount of time.
And this is the dinner thing we're having.
Correct.
And you have executive session at the end.
And, yep.
I was thinking, the school calendar piece, since we'll be at a family event, you know, there might be more, more families might be interested in participating, so I was thinking, would, could we have that at the beginning of the meeting?
Sure.
And given that this is at Chamberlain, is there any update on the working group on the airport?
Yeah, that's, you know what, we should put, we should put that on there, I have heard back from Carson, and we'll need to put it on the, I've heard back from Carson that he's interested on your, on your behalf to do that, and I talked to you briefly, I, I think it may be a good idea to have a board member that could be a liaison, but we can, we should put that on there, that's the Chamberlain, I forget the name of the committee exactly, Chamberlain Airport Planning Committee, or something like that, yeah, so we'll put that on there.
That's probably appropriate to include that. Good. All right.
Yeah.
Seeing no other comments, future agenda items.
And we're, we're moving along with the same process around the future, I don't know if there's anything else that's come up of, of recent, one of the things that we, we talked about was kind of the FTE allotment, I mean, not to lose track of that, if you wanted to add that to a future, so that that gets worked into monitoring, I don't know what we would call that, but FTE allocation monitoring or something, I don't know, I mean, I can come up with something, I just don't want it to, actually, I'd like it to go away, but I don't really want it to go away.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, it's sort of a staffing?
Yeah.
And FTE trends, maybe something to that effect?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't looked at where it would go, obviously, there's some logical location, but it would be kind of sub-headed underneath one of those.
Maybe we'll just put a pencil in, and you can look at policy on that. All right, we'll move on to consider the minutes of the January 7th meeting, any changes or comments? Seeing none, those are approved, we'll look at the January 14th minutes. Any comments or changes? Seeing none, those are approved, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
So, you have a resignation, and you have a hire in here, and those are both in your packet, I don't know if there's specific questions related to this?
Is there, just a quick one on the mathematics, is there a timing issue for the end of the year?
So, we, we have currently, since we've received it, we put a posting out on this position?
Mm-hmm.
And it's currently, I don't know that it's been hired yet, or filled, we have it temporarily filled, obviously, we can't have a hire until you accept the resignation formally, it is being, it is being covered, so, this is, again, based on the letter you have, it's really a, you know, a situation that warrants Ryan to, to move.
All right.
If it's currently a 0.4 position, why does it need to become a 0.5 position?
In part, it's, it's due to the coverage of the, of the, of the program being offered, so, the, the resignation is specific to mathematics, and the hire is not tied to that, Dan.
Okay, so it's not a replacement?
Correct, this is not a swap, so the, the hire is not...
Okay, I got it.
Took me a second there, sorry.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
I'll make that motion.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
All right, all right.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on AP orders 25 and 26? All right, I don't see any. Anything else, Stephen?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Let me make sure.
All in favor?